Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, Monday, August 12, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the VHS Commons. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Stepp.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Massey. Here. All members present?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Alrighty, Item 4 Legislative Report.
Oh, that's, I don't have anything actually. They are on a summer recess and it's like until November, so I don't know that I'll have one for the next couple of months.
Makes sense.
Makes my job very easy for these, yes.
Item 5 is the Student Liaison Report.
We also do not have anything.
Right, until school starts, yeah. Item 6, Student Board Member Report. Anything, Mr. Massey?
No.
You want to say like parting words?
Well, thank you, I mean, I've had fun, but I don't have anything planned.
No worries. Thank you for participating. It's good to have you and Nick on the board, you know, and just a good experience, I think, for you guys and for whoever follows you, so really appreciate you stepping up and doing that.
To have a great time in college.
Yep.
Yeah.
Item 7, Presentations, Introduction of New Staff.
We have Nikki.
Good evening, my name is Nikki Dotfoby, and I brought her in today to come back. I come here as a student here in the teaching experience and various roles, and I'm a very excited speaker.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Thanks for coming in tonight. Do we have Caitlin?
Caitlin?
Nope.
Nope, okay, we'll move on. Wes Weaver, Map Data Report.
Last year, oddly, within June, we recorded on our math and being math assessment results. So, as this is kind of an annual thing, we'll provide that for you now. I tried to blow it up a little bit so it was bigger than the last time because every group was a little bit small. But the four charts that are impacted before you are, one for reading and one for math. First of all, student percentage of students reading at or above grade level, students doing math at or above grade level, that's the first one. And you can see the results there with the blue bar being the performance in the fall and the red bar being the performance in the spring. So, that is just the percentage of students within each of those grades that are reading above the 50th percentile on what is a nationally normed assessment in math, I keep saying reading, but I mean math in this case, at or above the 50th percentile with about 13 million students in the cohort group, so it's a large group. I read today that roughly 50% of the districts, I didn't really know this number, but 50% of the districts in Ohio use math, it's between 45 and 50%, so that's even Ohio, that's a lot. So, you know, as you can see there, we want every student to be at or above grade level. So, kind of, the results are very much mixed across the board. Some of those are higher in the, in the spring indicating that we've kind of moved kids, kids up, some are not. I'll kind of come back to that when I look at the charts from back in certain years, which is the percentage of students who meet their growth target, fall, spring. So, every fall, the students take a, the test in September in math, and then they take it again in the spring, and this is the percentage of students who meet, we call their growth target. So, the computerized testing system sets a growth target for kids based on the national norms, and those numbers that, you know, at first glance, I think you can tell, are a little better than the sheer proficiency numbers, which means that we're relatively speaking, doing a better job of getting the students to meet their targeted growth for a year in math than we are at moving them above that 50th percentile, which is kind of a national norm sample. So, we've got 32 teachers teaching math. There's a, kind of, the people from NWA would tell you that 70% of students in a class meeting growth is a pretty good figure for, for a teacher. Twenty-two of our 32 teachers that teach math, K through 7, had 70% of the students meet their growth targets within their class.
One thing I would, just to clarify, so you could, you can reach your growth target and not be at grade level, okay? So, the achievement gap, that you, you always share about the achievement gap, the achievement gap starts, or is actually created from birth to age five. So, before kids ever come to school, before, that first day of kindergarten, they could be one, two, or three years behind, or they could be one, two, or three years ahead, okay? In the average third grade classroom in America, and I would say the average classroom period, there's eight different grade levels of ability. So, you see, when you look at are students at grade level, and you see those percentages, and then you compare it to the students that hit their growth targets, what, what this shows you really is that a lot of students were behind and were, even though they made growth and they hit their growth target, that wasn't enough to get them to grade level. We still have more work to do to get them to grade level, okay? And so, you have that zero to five where that, the achievement gap begins, and then you also, now we have the COVID situation that affected these students, and those students, I believe, now would be in fourth grade, that were, starting fourth grade. So, we're still seeing that, that COVID affecting the students being at grade level, okay? Still creating a huge achievement gap for students.
We obviously, over a year, over a year basis, want more and more and more of our teachers to have students, a high percentage of students meet their growth. Twenty-nine math teachers, 17 of the 29 math teachers had more students meet their growth this year than last year. So, I thought that was something that kind of stood out in the data. The second page is reading numbers. This is something we, we talk a lot about, spend a lot of time thinking about and working on. Matt Malir and I have been looking at these reading numbers for Vermillion Elementary Schools since then. I think we've talked about 13, 14 times, up to and including this week. It's something that we're really focused on looking at, the data, what it tells us about what we need to do. This is the percentage of students that are at or above grade level in reading. And there it is, you can see it from kindergarten through seventh grade, in terms of the number being higher in the spring, in the fall, is a little bit better than the math, more students on grade level. Kindergarten and first grade especially, they're very strong in terms of the number of kids at or above grade level in the spring.
And obviously, we're spending more time in those grade levels on reading. That, that's the primary skill, so there's going to be a difference there, usually.
Not only that, but then I'll talk about when we get the growth numbers on the back. That's also where we've applied a tremendous amount of resources, reading specialists, title teachers, doing remediation, using a system that we just started in January, a year and a half ago, with, to address this deficit with our readers who are behind. And that's, that's been a major, a major endeavor, something that's going to continue. The last of the four pages shows the percentage of students who meet their growth target this year, measured from a fall test to a spring test, and it, it kind of goes back to what they said about, you know, meeting that proficiency level, meeting that 50th percentile is different than meeting your growth target. We're catching kids up, we are catching kids up. Some of them are just, they're, they're not, they're, so, in this case, of our 29 teachers who teach English Language Arts, 18 up to 29 had a higher number of kids meet their growth this year than last year. So, something certainly we're working on. I think the final thing that I would say, when you look at the reading numbers, this kind of, and this goes in my conversations with Mr. Malir, that, you know, his, the teachers and administration embeds, looking for kids who threw three numbers, very much interested in this data, they know what these look like. When these teachers get these scores back in, in May, it's something that they're waiting and waiting to see, and it's something that they care about a great deal, so it's got a lot of attention. It kind of, I think lends some urgency to a conversation we're going to have this year about English Language Arts curriculum, which is basically the way we teach English Language Arts in every class to every kid, it's going to be K through, it's going to be K through 7, actually, K through 12, but we're teaching them to read, it's the lower grades that report. And that's something that begins on Friday when I meet with a group of K-12 LA teachers, and I, I think that's going to make an impact because this is what every kid is getting taught every day, not, not even remediation, the kids are kind of pulled out because they're behind, and this is, this is every kid, so I think that's going to be, that's, that's going to be.
Wes, how does this set of data for this year compare to last year's data? Are we seeing overall, I mean, isn't that where we're, why we kind of started it, so through the years, we can see whether we are?
Sure, sure. One thing that we, that we, that we don't do is compare kindergarten this year to kindergarten last year, because it's a different group of kids, and first grade to first grade, and so on and so forth. The kind of figure that I gave you, 18 out of 29 had more growth, that's kind of a teacher by teacher, year to year comparison, and the, the students who meet growth, that's kind of a, you know, they don't always start out during the fall where they left off in the spring, but when we say there's this number of kids meeting growth, that's the metric we're interested in, it compares that kid last year to that kid this year.
So, longitude, it's a longitudinal look at the students, sort of comparing them to other students, comparing them to themselves.
Right.
You're moving forward. Because what, that's the mistake that the state makes, is they want to compare this grade, this fifth grade, with last year's fifth grade. They're two separate.
Watch them as they move.
Yeah, they're completely separate groups of kids, and, you know, one, one group may have been, had significantly more students behind than the other group, so you just can't compare them and learn anything really from that. And obviously, the teachers can from their own experiences within the classroom, but the data itself doesn't tell you much when you're comparing two separate groups of kids.
But what about the Shelley's point, year over year, the same group of kids?
Yes.
Like, like last year's fifth graders compared to this year's sixth graders?
Yeah, that's what we want.
Better, worse, same, you know?
The, um, mixed. It's, it's really, it's like these, it's like these pictures, that, that, like fifth grade last year, sixth grade this year, kindergarten to first, then it, it's, it's a mixture. That's kind of something that's frustrating to Matt, like, we, we talk about that, like, you see some kids that do and some that don't. Now, the kids got remediation. We had, we had some students that junk made tremendous gains, tremendous gains, and then we had some others that made gains in their reading fluency, which is the, what we're teaching them to do, that's the stuff they missed in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and they have great gains in that, but it's not showing up in math. So, it is honestly, it's a mixed picture really.
That is definitely something that we look at, is, is following those kids longitudinally through the grade levels. Yes.
And then just like, obviously, you don't want to strictly teach for the purpose of scores.
Right.
But, you know, do you, like, especially when the, the ones that, you know, you're sitting there scratching your head trying to figure out why, you know, but how do you keep the, the staff engaged to the point where they're not just like throwing their hands up, and like, I don't know what to do next, you know what I mean, like?
You can't, that's what they do.
That's, that's true, but, but, the elementary school teachers read a book last year called DataWise, which is kind of a, it's a, it's very simple, but it's a, it's a way for them to collaborate and figure out what's going right and what's not going right, and to get to the heart of the problem, to, to figure out what they call pop problem of practice, and then to address it in their classrooms. So, when you hone in on something that you see as a weakness, and you have every one of our dedicated teachers at second grade or fourth or fifth grade, looking at the same problem, and collectively trying to figure out a way to solve that problem in all their classrooms, then they can come back together, as, they meet once a quarter as a group, they can come back together and say, okay, we've tried to do this, what is our, our assessments that we're giving during the school year show us about whether or not this, and they, that cyclical kind of continuous improvement, that, I think, that's something that gives hope to their work, and, you know, shows gains in, you know, besides this year to year.
And, and the collaboration among the teachers, because, you know, there might be a teacher that's struggling with this one student, she can't understand why she can't get him or her to this level, and, and another teacher has figured out something. Yeah. And so, they, they share that with them, and then they implement that, and then, and hopefully, it works with this child as well. So, we, you know, schools are designed for teachers to go in their classroom and work by themselves with kids.
Right.
And we don't give them enough time to collaborate and share their knowledge about things, and that's what we're trying to do with these quarterly meetings, is they're, they're going to be meeting with their grade level teams and having those very conversations about, you know, I'm working with these three kids and I can't get them to this point, what have you done with students in that same situation, and sharing the knowledge.
Yeah, that was, I mean, I've heard you guys talk about horizontal and vertical alignment, right?
Yes.
So, it's, that's, hopefully, that's what they're doing, right? So, like, if a high school math teacher says, hey, when I get these students into high school, they don't know how to do this, or this is what they're really weak on, that's being passed back to the junior high, right? So, for, for, you know, that development.
Yes, that's that vertical alignment where we say, okay, there's a gap here, you know, we're seeing across the board that our students can't do X, that's got to then translate to, okay, we fix that at the, the other grade level, and it's usually a curriculum issue. It's, it's either not in there, or it's not being taught the way it's expected to be. Yeah, that's why those conversations have to continue.
One thing I would offer that came out of that last year was the need to have a better integrated stair step writing instruction curriculum, because I, I feel like every English Language Arts teacher, kind of, the, the reading instruction is ahead of writing instruction when it comes to like scripted, do this, do this, we know this works, and we, they're, they're excited about getting together because they know that we don't have a great seamless writing curriculum that came out of that work that we did last year, and that's something else that we're starting on Friday, so it's going to.
Good. Last question.
Yeah.
I think you already alluded to it. How do we compare with like state averages?
I don't, we don't get state averages from NWA, Matt. They give you the national, you know, they have a national percentile, this is what your score is, if you're 50%. Not, there's not one from the state to mine, obviously.
There's not, but, so what you're looking at here is telling us, these, this is what our, our students are performing relative to 13 million other students across the nation who are taking the same test.
Yeah.
So, so when it says that, at or above grade level, that standard is set by NWA, right? And that's the 50th percentile, and our students compared to everybody else, this, so 65% of them are hitting that mark, okay? Relative to the other 13 million students that are taking the test.
Gotcha.
See? So, that's one of the things we like about it, is, is it is a national normed test, and Ohio only compares students in Ohio.
Okay.
And the growth we're seeing, like, the students meeting the target, or the growth target, that's like, you would say where we're expected to be with that, like, you mentioned how many teachers met it this year, did better this year than last, like, that's, we're happy with where that is then, that's what you were hoping to see, kind of that number, or?
I, I think those numbers, digging deep into them, are better than the, the other at 50% or above numbers, that, that, it's kind of like Dave describes, we've got some students that are here, and, you know, and here's what the growth is here, and we got this much, it still doesn't mean they're to that, to that point. So, yes, I, I think so, that growth is.
Is what we're hoping.
Yes.
Yeah, NWA would tell you that if you can get, and this is, this to me is too low of a bar, but they'll tell you that if, if you, if a teacher gets 70% of their students hit their growth target, they're doing a really good job. Now, most teachers are not happy with 70%, you know, and, and so, the goal really is to get 90% of our kids to hit their growth target if we can. That, that's the goal, very difficult to do, but it's also doable. You see here, seventh grade, 82%, yeah? It, it can, but we have to have the focus, and we have to use the assessment data to tell us where we're not making ground with the kids. But the growth target is, is hugely important because it, it tells us this kid is on track to make a year's worth of growth. Some kids need to make more than a year's worth of growth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thanks, Wes. I appreciate it. Item 8, Public Participation on Agenda Items. Don't think we have anyone signed up to ask about agenda items, so we will move on from that. Item 9 is Superintendent's Report and/or Recommendations.
I would just tell you that we started with the new teachers, that they came in today. They'll be here Monday through Thursday, and we're, we're teaching them all about our district, we're teaching them about our vision and our goals, the things we're trying to accomplish at the district level, and then we're also teaching them a lot of things that they need just to be able to, to be effective as a teacher in the classroom. And so, that, that'll happen, there's four days of that this week, they're going to, they're going to learn all this like drinking from a fire hose, you know, when you, when you're new to a district, even if you've taught before, we do things very differently. So, we're, we're doing that with them this week, and then on Friday, everybody will be here for a convocation, and we'll be starting the school year.
All right. Item 10, Treasurers' Report and/or Recommendations.
Thank you. A, Recommend a Resolution to the Board to Approve the Financial Report for July 2024, and that's Attachment A.
I'll second.
All right. Starting with our general funds, first we'll look at revenue. Through the month of July, we received 5.3 million in the general fund compared to 4.8 million this time last year, and 5.1 in '23. The district receives tax advances in the month of July and is on pace to collect its historical average revenue. We'll know a little bit more in August when we receive the rest of our actual taxes and homestead and roll back. But from everything that I can tell, will, will be our historical average throughout the year. Moving on to food service revenue, through the month of July, we received a whopping $739. But it blows last year's away. Last year was $188, and in '23, it was $155. Food service should continue to collect its historical average revenue once we're back in school. And then looking at all funds through the month of July, we received 5.4 million in all funds compared to 4.8 million at this time last year, and 5.1 in '23. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at the general fund, through the month of July, we expended $2.5 million from the general fund compared to 2.7 at this time last year, and 2.7 in fiscal year '23. Again, the district can't expect to spend slightly more this year than it did the previous year. Looking at food service through the month of July, we've expended $36,000 compared to $39,000 the previous year, and $45,000 in fiscal year '23. Again, that's just all salaries and, and buying food and things like that. And then lastly, looking at all funds on the expenditure side through the month of July, we've expended $2.6 million compared to $2.8 million at this time last year, and $2.9 in fiscal year '23. And then we'll look at cash, looking at the general fund through the month of July, we had a total of $19.1 million in cash in the general fund compared to $19.4 at this time last year, and $21.3 in fiscal year '23. Food service through the month of July, we had a total of $368,000 compared to $376,000 at this time last year, and $346,000 in fiscal year '23. And then all of our cash through the month of July, we had a total of $22.4 in all cash compared to $23.8 last year, and $26.6. Down below on the cash by fund, that is to the penny what we have in all of our funds, general fund through title funds there. So, you can see where all of that $22.4 million is. On the investment side, through the month of July, we burned a total of $67,188.73 compared to $36,457.94 at this time last year. It's a difference, it's an increase of $30,730.79, or 84.3% more in interest compared to last year.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. B, Recommend a Resolution to the Board to Approve the August 2024 Appropriations, and that is Attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second. So, in July, we set up temporary appropriations. For August, now, we're going to set our official permanent appropriations. On the first page there, that is just our certificate of estimated resources, what this shows is our unencumbered balance, that is our actual cash balance as of July 1st, so once I close the books, that is the remaining cash in all of those funds, and then what I anticipate us to collect in taxes, and what I anticipate us to collect in other sources of revenue, which, beginning cash plus taxes plus other sources of revenue equals a total amount of estimated resources by fund. On the second page, that is what the appropriations are, that is our spending limit, that's what the board is setting our spending limit to be right now. You can see our temporary was 21 million, we bumped that up to 28.8 million for the month of August. I don't anticipate it growing much more than that, in fact, by the end of the school year, that should come down a little bit. But again, you stake your beginning cash minus your appropriations, what's on the third page, leaves you an ending balance of, of $15 million there. Any questions from that?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. C, Recommend a Resolution to the Board to Approve the School Van Purchase from American Buses and Accessories, Inc., at a cost of $76,729.
Um, I'll second.
Currently, we have two vans, and, and they're older, so we need to start phasing these things out and replacing some of our capital assets.
So, when we get this one, we'll decommission one?
We'll put it as a spare at least. It's still drivable right now, but there are safety concerns regarding like some of the body structure down the road from now. Everything's fine right now, it's just down the road there. We want to make sure we have.
Want to make sure we're not hanging on to something that's not safe or not worth the time and money, right?
Yeah, all of our vehicles are inspected by the Highway Patrol. Everything's road legal, everything's just fine, everything's safe, it's just these vans take a little while to get, so it may be six, 12, 18 months before we get one, so we want to make sure that we, we are in line to get one when we can.
Makes sense. Any other questions?
No.
Call the roll.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. D, Recommend a Resolution to the Board to Approve the Purchase of Two Passenger Buses from Hill International Trucks at a Cost of $145,616 for the 54 passenger, and $146,978 for the 84 passenger school bus.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is the same thing, again, just life cycle costing, trying to make sure that we have the right equipment for when we do need it down the road.
Yep. Any questions?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Massey.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. E, Recommend a Resolution to the Board to Approve the Agreement with Vermillion Local School District and Men of Courage Youth Mentoring Services for Saylorway Middle School and Vermillion High School at a Cost of $5800.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is something that was really successful. We just started it last year, and we weren't sure of, you know, how it would turn out, but the feedback from the students was, that it was excellent, and, and more students want to be a part of it. So, it's, it was, it was a good thing that we did.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.[1717.97]
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. F, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the transportation contract with Amherst Exempt School, Exempt Village School, who will transport students to and from Pep Willow Creek for the 2024-2025 school year for five weeks at a cost of fifty-eight dollars per day.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. G, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the transportation purchase service agreement with Spectrum Growth, who will transport seven students door-to-door services at a daily rate of forty dollars per student from August 26, 2024 to June 5, 2025.
I'll move.
I'll second.
What is this one?
This is for transporting students to attend the Spectrum School.
Okay.
And we have contacted with transportation, and we just do not have the ability to get those students from Vermillion to Lorraine and back.
Gotcha, okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. And H, recommend a resolution to the board to approve the donation of four thousand dollars from Grace United Methodist Church to acquire two three-D printers for the robotics program.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's a pretty awesome donation.
Yeah.
Anything, anybody? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Massey?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item eleven is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the July 8, 2024 regular meeting and the July 23, 2024 special meeting. Item B, approve the employment action, resignations as listed on the agenda, retirement of Wanda McKenzie, educational aide, leave of absence for Nancy German, a van driver, maternity leave for Allison Keating. Item C, approve the one-year certified limited contract for the 2024-25 school year to the following, Nikki Yakavozzi, fifth grade. Item D, approve the 2024-25 additional duties contract for the following certified staff as listed on the agenda. Item E, approve the one-year supplemental non-teaching contracts for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item F, approve the special rate of thirty-four dollars an hour to the following listed on the agenda. Item G, approve the new teacher orientation at the special project rate of thirty-four dollars per hour for a total of twenty-six hour, twenty-six hours to those listed on the agenda. Item H, approve the new teacher orientation at a special project rate of thirty-four dollars per hour for a total of twenty-nine hours to those listed on the agenda. Item I, approve up to two hours at the special project rate of thirty-four dollars an hour to the following teacher mentors in a, to attend the new teacher orientation on August 13, 2024, to those listed on the agenda. Item J, approve the adjustment to the additional duty contracts to Kelly Pankos, VHS yearbook advisor, and Raymond Karas, and Donald Hires, from assistant football coach to co-assistant coaches. Item K, approve the one-year classified contract for the 2024-25 school year to those listed on the agenda. Item L, approve up to fifteen hours of professional development for the following classified staff at their hourly rate from July 10 to August 19, 2024, to those listed on the agenda.